Okay. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting. Excuse me, for May 13th, 2020. I'd like to remind everyone that all school committee meetings are recorded and streamed out live at most times, other than this evening, but they are being recorded for use at a later date. So keep that in mind. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Do you also join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know somebody. Okay. Everybody's here. I'm waiting for Fred. It's connecting to audio.
I'll unmute everybody so that Bob, you can get a roll call from them and then they can mute themselves as we go through.
Yep.
Okay, so everybody's unmuted?
I'm waiting for Fred to connect audio. I can't see it, but I know he's here. Fred?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Is everybody on video? I can't see Dan. I can't see WHCA and I can't see Fred.
Having difficulty.
I can see you now. Can you see me? Fred?
Yep.
WHCA is always
Kevin?
Yep, they're always blank, so.
And Dan? Okay.
Dan, Dan's coming back in.
Steve Boyce?
Yes, here.
President. Don Byers?
Yes.
Ian Cullody?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Here.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Rob O'Brien?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Callie Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, present. Okay.
It's present.
I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of April 29th, 2020.
Mr. Small, make that move.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it. Chris Scriven?
Mr. Small made it. Mr. Scriven seconded it. Roll call, Mr. Boyce? Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
Yep.
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Callie Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. Superintendent's going to update the committee on student remote learning, school closure updates and the graduating senior class. Jeff?
Thanks, Bob. So last week, through the commissioner, sent out new standards for remote learning for district to implement. Early last week or this week, they're called power standards, which is just diving down deeper into the core of what we were already doing. Teachers across the district are digging a little bit deeper into curriculum instead of just review. The principals right now are working on how we're assessing kids or grading them out for report cards. It's still a credit and credit at the high school level and we're looking at simple passes in the elementary and the middle level. As far as our closure, certain things that we have to get done prior to June 15th, which is the last day of school. Students need to pick up their materials that have been left in the school since March 13th and teachers have to close out their classrooms. So we've been in contact with the principals to set up timeframes so that the teachers can come in. And what they're going to do is pack up all their student materials into bags. And we're going to have a pickup, more or less like we did with the Chromebook. Pickup parents will then will come to the school in their driveway loop and pick up their students' materials. We're starting that process with the senior class first. The high school will be giving away or collecting senior obligations and returning all senior locker stuff, anything from their gym locker on the 26th and 27th of May. The following week, or that week, I'm sorry, the elementaries and the middle level teachers will be returning to school to pack up everything for their kids in their classroom and their locker. The following week, the week of the first through the fifth, students will be asked and their principals will be setting up building specifics on when that parent pickup can be for their students. And the big one for us is we need all our Chromebooks returned. So we've staged the 11th and 12th of June for Chromebook pickup and we'll return those back to the high school. We have close to 700 Chromebooks out, so we want to try to retrieve them with as little damage possible and make sure we account for them. Something that everybody wants to know is what's going on with the senior class and what are we doing? First and foremost, on May 29th at 1:30, we're going to do a senior parade at the high school. The senior classes asked that all schools be represented, meaning all teachers at the elementary and middle will be staged at different areas of the high school parking lot, from the tennis courts up to the loop. Building specifics so seniors can drive through and say goodbye to their teachers, wave goodbye, and do a real senior send-off on the 29th, which would have been graduation day. That's going to be at 1:30. On June 30th, there'll be a virtual award ceremony for scholarship. The high school administration will read out in forming arts center all the students who are getting awards and the students can watch that, I believe, live streaming. I'm not sure we have the details, but June 30th is going to be the award ceremony. And then we're really, really tentatively looking at June or July 31st as a graduation ceremony outdoors on the football field. It'll really depend upon social distancing rules outlined by the governor, by the CDC. But we're tentatively looking at July 31st, rain or shine, out on the football field for all of our seniors to get their diplomas. I don't know what that's going to look like yet. I don't know if it's going to be, if we're going to be able to have everyone in attendance or if we're going to stage it like the Air Force Academy did with just the graduates spaced six feet apart. I'm hoping by July 31st, our restrictions are a little less. We will still maintain social distancing and everything, but we're really looking at a live graduation on July 31st. If things shift and change in the next month, we'll make modifications. If we have to go virtual because Massachusetts goes back into a resurgence of COVID-19, we'll do that. But Chris and his staff has been working really hard and the seniors I've spoken to, I had a class meeting two weeks ago, were really interested in doing something live so they can at least see each other and get their diplomas in that out on that field. Update the committee, actually, Chris Jones and his staff went out and delivered signs to the seniors who purchased signs last week. That was, I think, a really good thing, brought police and fire from both communities. So I thank both of them for being proactive and helping us do that. Police and fire will be actively involved in the senior send-off on the 29th as well. We're trying to do it with all the bells and whistles for the seniors. The other thing is Whitman or Hanson Middle School is scheduled a similar parade for their eighth graders. And I'm not sure of the date, maybe George can chime in, but it'll be sometime in June. And I think Whitman Middle School is doing something similar, but I don't have the date on that as well. So they're going to get a little bit of a send-off from eighth grade to the high school. So that's my update on remote learning, our closure piece right now and the graduating class. If anyone has any questions.
Jeff, could you repeat the date for the senior send-off, please?
5/29, graduation day, 1:30 in the afternoon.
Now Jeff, I would assume that the school committee would be invited if they would like to attend.
Yep, you guys have to be 12 feet apart, though. Not six feet. Absolutely.
Talking about graduation, I would assume that would be a traditional graduation, like always, the whole school committee's invited. There's going to be speeches and
Absolutely. Again, I don't know what that looks like depending upon our restrictions on who I can put where. But yes, we'll do it. We'll do it up. I did tell Dr. Jones he has to keep the speech short this year. Because if you're looking at a graduation, rain or shine on the 31st of July, it could be 98 degrees outside on the football field. So we have to keep that in mind that it's going to be hot. It's hot in June, but it's going to be extra hot in July. So, but we're shooting for that weekend of the 31st.
My memory serves me correct, the last graduation we had on the football field, it poured rain and it was a mud bowl. We were standing at the stairs catching kids coming down the stairs at that last graduation.
2006.
Any questions for the superintendent about what's going on with the remote learning, school closure updates, or graduating senior class? Okay.
Thank you. John, Tuffy, do you want to speak to the HVAC project in Hanson?
Sure. I just wanted to make the committee aware that on the 28th of May, we will be rolling over the debt that exists right now for the air conditioning project in Hanson. It's a $500,000 one-year ban. And we've talked to Hanson about what they would like to do and what they want to do is just roll it over. And that is something we talked about during the budget process and this doesn't add to the budget. And it doesn't add to the debt burden for the district. It's just a routine rollover and it's already accounted for for next year.
Any questions for John? Remember, if I don't get you, it's because I'm shifting back and forth, looking at two different screens, so don't be afraid to speak up. Okay. Any questions for the superintendent, other than he's not going anywhere? The next agenda item is the committee needs to revoke, to vote to rescind the February 26th, 2020 vote on the Whitman Middle School feasibility study and warrant article and revoke new language provided by bond council, which includes authorization to borrow. What has happened a little bit is Whitman has changed how they're going to do their funding sources, I understand it. Chris, do you agree with that? And no, Fred, you were on that committee. Do you agree with that, Fred? Go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I had to unmute myself. The town of Whitman facing a severe revenue crunch does not have the available funds to pay for it out of free cash as they were going to once do. So they're going to do bans, very similar to what we just spoke of with the Hanson HVAC project. So I believe they're looking at a three-year ban, you know, in order to pay for the feasibility study.
John, go ahead.
Actually, if I could just add, I confirm with what Fred had to say. I've talked to Frank Lyman and they are in fact looking at a three-year time span to pay it off.
Mike, Chris?
Just wondering, does anyone know if the finance committee has been able to chime in on this?
It, Mr. Hayes?
Go ahead.
Okay. I do know that they had brief discussion on it, yeah, on Tuesday night with their meeting. So it was that last night they did have discussion and they do understand, you know, where we're going with it, et cetera. It did also go through the capitals and facilities subcommittee. And that recommendation came from there initially. So it's the way to be able to get the project to move forward and to be able to pay for it. You know, whereas you want to conserve the cash, so to speak, if the cash isn't available. I know that there was revenue issues, I think, in every town across the Commonwealth right now, you know, as far as that goes.
Chris?
I'm just wondering about the process. Is this something that would have to be on the warrant?
I'm going to read it. Yeah, there's a placeholder on the warrant. Go ahead, John, then Don.
I was just going to say that the language that bond council has drafted at the town manager's request is, gives them the flex, gives us the flexibility to either have Whitman use available funds, which would be free cash or to borrow the money. And bond council has also invited Whitman with two different motions. One is to use available funds and the other is to borrow. So the flexibility is there. It's entirely up to up to the town as they get closer to town meeting to make a decision.
Thanks, John. Don?
Thank you, John. Can anyone explain the difference with that flexibility in funds that are available, as John just explained, it allows the town to choose whether to use free cash or this bond, which is essentially a three-year loan. Is that right? It's financing this 850,000 over three years.
What they're talking about is a three What they're talking about at this point in time is a three-year loan. Whether that's what it winds up to be or not is entirely up to the town issues debt. And just in terms of stability, it has to do with what the town meeting will vote on, whether they vote to use free cash or vote to borrow the funds.
Okay. I did watch some of those meetings. I do know that the town of Whitman has, is working with free cash of 1.9 million right now. I do recognize that every town is struggling with unknown revenue issues facing COVID-19. I do, as a school committee member, want to keep the focus on the importance of this middle school building and the reason we have this feasibility study. And the fact that when we applied with the statement of interest, MSBA requested that superintendent more or less come to the front of the room. That Whitman Middle School was accepted into and invited into eligibility on its first go-around. And that decision was made based on needs. And my comment comes simply with the hope that changing this funding mechanism, if the town of Whitman does, from free cash that is available to a three-year loan, certainly hope that doesn't jeopardize this project in its initial stage. I certainly understand it's up to the voters of the town of Whitman, but I would like to just stress the importance right now of how much this school district does need this building. There is no other alternative other than to have students continue to sit in a building that has been deemed what it is. I don't have copies of those reports, but I think Ernie Samir, I would love to have heard from Ernie on those comments. So.
Fred? I'm just, Fred, if I'm laid in on the comment, don't get mad. I'm just shooting back and forth. Go ahead.
Just put my finger up. You know, we do need the project. It's an alternative way of paying for it other than taking it out of free cash or one money that we, you know, it's been determined simply at this point in time not to have that revenue. I mean, just the revenue projections alone, we're five hundred and some odd thousand dollars short to meeting Article 2. So there will be some monies coming out of free cash. So when you say we have 1.9 million. And I'm not in calm and it's not my position to, you know, speak for them, but this is an alternative way of being able to get the project to move forward. Because the other alternative, if you can afford it, is to turn around and have to wait. And who knows if we'd ever get back on a list. So it's a town meeting vote. It's not a, you know, debt exclusion. It's nothing that has to go to an override, but it's simply done at a meeting.
John?
And to follow up, I have followed the finance committee meetings and they have made a recommendation previously to use free cash for this. Whether that changes or not, I don't know, but that was available and that was recognized.
It was also two months ago when you didn't have COVID-19 and you didn't have the issues that we face today. So, I mean, just in the past two weeks, we've had things change and revenue forecasts change incredibly, you know, throughout everything.
Chris?
So if the town of Whitman is just simply making the request of the school committee because we're the only one authorized to do the borrowing, isn't this really just a town decision that we're facilitating? I'm not sure the debate as to whether Whitman should or shouldn't do it. This is really the purview of the school committee.
Mr. Howard, you're 100% correct.
Exactly. I don't think anybody would challenge the fact that Whitman Middle School has probably reached somewhat to the end of its usability and Whitman needs this school project. Changing the funding, Don, should not affect the eligibility. MSBA just wants to make sure that you either have the money in free cash or you have the ability to borrow. And this is the ability to borrow. I also would like to bring up the fact that it doesn't say in the feasibility study vote that it's a three-year loan and I have the, I'm going to read it before we move to the vote. But at any given moment, the town of Whitman can pay it off completely. And in the end of this, whether they, it is totally about, depending on how much reimbursement you receive from MSBA, they also reimburse that amount for the feasibility study. So just throwing a figure out, if it's 48%, whatever you spend on this feasibility study, the town of Whitman will be getting that amount back. Go ahead, Don.
Okay. And I don't know what the difference is, or maybe I do, with free cash versus a loan at town meeting, does it require a different vote of the Whitman voters on that funding mechanism?
I don't know that either. I believe it requires two-thirds, but that would be something you might check with Mr. Linum with or with their town council. But we've done this before.
Right. And that just goes back to my support for the project and my hope that this committee and the towns will support this project. There is a difference if we fund it by free cash. I believe it's a majority vote. A loan would require two-thirds vote. So there's just a greater difference there and the chance it may not get voted. So I wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Move to the vote?
Anyone else? Okay, so I entertain a motion to rescind the vote of February 26th, 2020, which was voting on the Whitman feasibility study for study warrant article and revoke new language from bone council. I'll get to that in a minute. I'm looking for rescinding a vote of February
Make that motion.
Taylor will second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes, unanimous. Okay, I entertain a motion to accept, as I'm going to read. Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Whitman Middle School feasibility, feasibility study vote. Voted that the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of $850,000 for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study to understand the best solution to the physical and educational deficiencies of the Whitman Middle School located at 100 Coffell Avenue, Whitman, Massachusetts. Including all costs incidental and related thereto the study, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow set amount in pursuant to Mass General Laws chapter 71, section 16, small d, and the district agreement as amended are pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Mass School Building Authority/MSBA grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by MSBA. And any cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district. Provided further that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA. Further voted, the borrowing authorized by this vote to meet the appropriation described shall be rescinded in the event that the town of Whitman shall vote to appropriate a like amount to pay the cost of the study from available funds. Further voted, that within seven days from the date of which this vote is adopted, the secretary be and hereby is instructed to notify the board of selectmen of each member towns of this district as to the amount, general purposes of the debt herein authorized as required by the district agreement and by chapter 71, section 16, small d, of general laws. I would entertain a motion to accept what I just
Mr. Small will make that motion.
Ms. Taylor will second.
Is there any further discussion by the committee before we move to the vote?
Chair?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Fred.
Just, it hit me when I saw the small d, just going back to from a few years ago. I believe that it's a majority vote at the town level. You can please double-check me, but I'm pretty sure that that's what the town level vote needs to be as majority. I think we had quite the big bruhaha over that in the past.
Okay. And as it said in the vote to answer what Don was talking about, it says the borrowing authorized by this to meet the appropriation described above shall be rescinded in the event that the town shall vote to appropriate a like amount to pay the cost. So if they choose to a town meeting, they could change that, Don. And it would change this vote. Any further discussion? Don't forget, if I miss you, I'm screening back and forth. Just Chris Scriven?
Bob, I don't think it changes the vote. I think, if I understand, it just gives them the flexibility to do either or, right?
Yeah, they can, they can, yeah, I'm sorry. It changes the vote from the bans to they can use either or. That's correct. That's kind of, that's what I meant. It wasn't clear enough. I'm sorry. John?
I was going to say, I believe that what we're talking about here gives the, gives the school district the ability to adjust to whatever motion, whatever method the town of Whitman decides to use. Town of Whitman will have its own separate set of votes that will be quite specific as to what they choose to do.
I agree. Any further discussion before we move to the vote? Seeing none. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cullody?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. Next up, the committee will discuss the budget regional agreement and vote possibly to certify a FY 2021 operating budget and local assessment if we so choose. The superintendent has prepared a document and I'd like to ask him to speak about it and roll the numbers and then we can discuss it as we go. It will take voting an amendment and then voting a budget with the teachers or without the teachers and then rescinding the vote on statutory in that order. So Jeff, you can take the floor and anybody, as we're going, put your hand up and if we have to stop and discuss anything that you want to discuss, I expect this to be somewhat controversial in the fact that it's something that's been ongoing. So superintendent, go ahead.
So I'd like to start first by talking a little bit about our current, where we are currently. I sent you some documents today about our current budget, some revenues and some losses, where we anticipate some costs or some monies that we will have left over in the FY 20 budget. I didn't put some numbers to those, but let me just go through the potential savings that we have that we're not really expending due to the closure since March 13th. So SJ Services, people have asked what SJ Services are doing. We really furloughed them the first week of April due to an outbreak of an employee, a spouse of an employee contracting the virus. So we put them out the first week of April and they haven't been back since. We did receive an invoice from SJ Services for the month of April, which was a full bill. And I contacted the owner of the company and he's revising the bill for April and May. Just letting you know, we do have three employees that are paid through SJ Services, but I anticipate a substantial revenue coming back to the district from SJ Services or just, we're not coming back. We just won't have to pay a certain invoice for them for the month of April and May. My anticipation is they're back full June 1st, getting us prepared for whatever we're going to look like in late August, early September. Um getting us prepared for whatever we're going to look like in uh late August, early September. First student is another big bill that's out there. Um we saw payment of first student on the thirteenth of, of March after their last run. Uh there's a meeting Monday. So John Tuffy is very involved with a group of South Shore business managers. And we're trying to work out a negotiation. Uh by giving first students some, some monies for their upkeep of their buses. For their, their, their insurances, for their lot storage, things like that. Um so we're not paying a hundred percent uh cost for first students. Uh but we will negotiate a summit, so to speak, uh for lack of service between March and um. And June. One of the things in, in DOR legislation is that. We're not supposed to pay for services that aren't rendered. However, the lit legislature has been back and forth on this. And, and John's more proficient in the language than I am. But uh we should see some first student savings. Uh after that meeting on Monday and I'll be able to report out what we're, we're expecting as far as savings from first student transportation sometime next week. North River Collaborative is one of our special education transportation providers. And as of uh April twenty second, I'm on the Board of Directors. We uh, we agreed as a board to furlough the drivers from North River Collaborative. Um but we still have to pay the collaborative for their storage fees of their vans and to keep them running so that they uh will be able to provide transportation for us next year. Uh a very rough estimate of those savings is about sixty grand. And I say very rough, I just had Lisa Forbes put together some numbers based on figures that she had. Um Fox Transportation is our other uh special education transportation vendor and John is working on a modification to their contract. And we should have some figures there, but uh. Uh there's, there is some significant savings to uh Fox Transportation. Collegiate Press sent me an invoice this afternoon. I'm trying to work through that. Collegiate Press is our, is our copy uh center. Uh they've kept their employees on and they've applied and were denied and then reapplied for some federal help to keep those folks on board. They're gonna be issuing us a credit for next year uh on their, on their bill. But our click cost, which is our actual copy cost in the buildings, uh stopped on March thirteenth. So we will see some revenue savings from first, or from Collegiate Press. And as you know, uh just district by, we didn't have an athletic program this spring. We are gonna pay our head coaches. A, a, a small amount of, of their, for their service uh offseason. Um. Just the head coaches, but I'm anticipating a savings in our athletic budget from this year of sixty five to seventy thousand dollars. Those are, and, and those are our big ticket savings right now that I can see. Um I didn't want to put numbers to them because I don't have hard numbers and I don't want the committee to be upset. If those numbers come in lower than I'm anticipating due to whatever expenditures we have um moving forward. The other documents I really wanted to show you was that uh expenditure, that deficit document. I'm sorry Fred, go ahead.
Uh just to go back, uh North River Collaborative. Uh storage of their vans. Are they running into an issue with needing, with having enough room to store their vans? And I'm just wondering if. Some way somehow the Park Ave School could be a solution for them. And you know, maybe garner us a little bit of revenue at a discounted rate.
Uh that, that I don't know, but they were the, they are the group that was providing transportation for our food. They were delivering food and still are delivering food um. To our families that don't have vehicles. So they are delivering food for us right now minimally, but they kept a couple of drivers on. I can call Steve over, Steve Donovan over at North River to see if they're having any issues there. Uh but I'm only one vote on that committee uh or, or, or of that Board of Directors. Um and we uh, we voted to furlough those drivers on the twenty second. So that's a savings there, but that's a good idea Fred. Thanks for sharing that. The deficit sheet from full day K and pre K is the sheet that I wanted to make you aware of. We're running a deficit of about three hundred and twenty two thousand dollars and some change. Uh from lack of tuitions and reimbursement tuitions. And we always run a deficit in pre K. We have more special education students um in pre K. Then that, that counterbalance uh because it's an integrated pre K that counterbalance the tuition in students. So we're running a deficit there because of lack of tuition. It seems uh unbeknownst to me this year, seemed like we always had a deficit in pre K. Uh and it was just absorbed in the district uh through, through some revolving and stuff like that. But I wanted you to meet, to make the committee aware of that because not all the revenues that we're saving is, is just. Revenue. There are some expenditures that uh, that we have to pay. So that's the big ticket of expenditures as well. And then John Tuffy uh. Ask him to speak a little bit about Circuit Breaker. Um that uh, Don, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Don.
Sure, just going back to SJ Services. Um you mentioned August and May invoices will be adjusted. Do you have information on what a typical monthly full bill would be under those services?
So April, it, it'll be April and May and you, it runs about a hundred grand. But I don't, like, so I don't know what those employees are. Um so I'm, I'm expecting David Shad to send me the updated invoices shortly. Uh my email correspondence was with him yesterday. But uh the typical bill is, is ninety nine thousand dollars a month.
Okay. And then North River Collaborative, the note says that they furloughed their drivers on April twenty second. Was there any communication? So the expectation is. That we've paid for those drivers from the closure on March sixteenth through April twenty second?
Yes.
Any conversation there on? Savings or why they chose? Yeah.
We're, we're one vote in the collaborative and that was what the Board of Directors decided to do with to keep those employees employed. And at that point, if you, if you recall, we weren't sure if we were coming back on May fourth or not. Um so those were the decisions to furlough employees. And then not have drivers if the governor decided to keep this open. Um that's the problem that, that these folks are running into, I think in transportation. Uh folks that are being laid off or on unemployment in some, in some positions are making more money on unemployment. Than their position reopening. Um so that's the decision that Steve Donovan put in front of the Board of Directors and that's what we affirmed on the, for the twenty second.
Okay, that makes sense because you're right. At the time, we hoped to be returning sooner, so they kept them employed and.
Correct. And then, and once we figured out that, that we were going later or not at all, it was, it was a pretty easy decision.
Okay, can I ask one more question? Um any information on the substitute teacher line item? Any savings there? That you've seen?
That, there will be some savings, but one of the things that, that we need to, to remember, we do have a, a teacher. That's still out unpaid administrative leave. And since uh some things are still closed within the Commonwealth, uh we haven't been able to move past that. So that line is gonna be less than, than expected uh as far as savings. But there will be some revenues. I just don't think it's gonna be big ticket. It'll be, it'll help, but it won't be significant.
Okay, thank you.
Fred. Fred?
Uh with, with the closure of the pre K and the full day K programs. Uh the teachers and parents, are they still providing any services?
They're providing education every day. So they're still doing their, their, what's expected of them. And it, it's funny because I was invited to a, a Jill Kane Zoom today that I got, I got uh. I got wrapped up in budget stuff this morning, so I couldn't attend. But the pre K and the K, if you, if anyone wants any information. Tricia Porter Collins and the principal sent me um the curriculum that they're working on virtually. And a lot of it is social skills and things like that and just developmental thing, but they're continuing to work the best that they can do uh via Zoom. One of the things that I would mention uh moving forward, and if not for this conversation, it'll be for a policy or a discussion around a policy. If we were to um. Have an issue like this again next year, if we were to close. Uh in another school committee meeting, I'm gonna ask the committee to revisit the tuition based program and whether or not if we. Go virtually or if we're in a brick and mortar building, we need to maintain tuitions. Because the district won't be able to absorb these costs uh moving forward. So I will draft something, but I just wanted to. Give that to you and, and have you think about that, that any tuition based programs will, we will have to continue to recover tuitions. Uh if we're paying employees. So. And then the final, I don't know, Chris, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris Howard?
Yeah, so just, I don't know if you're gonna get to it. So uh is there a way, I'm, I'm crunching the numbers over here, right? So I see the three twenty three that is gonna have to flow out for the pre K. K. Um. At some point, kind of when you're done going through all these mechanics, can you give us a conservative? Rough guess of what we see kind of holistically in terms of savings? I know, I know you're gonna walk through some pieces, but I, nothing, like what is, what is a rough number, if you will? Um so where are you gonna wanna do that now? Or you wanna get through that next piece on? The circuit breaker stuff. At some point, can you just give us a sense of what that total net savings could be?
So let me get through the circuit breaker piece and, and then I'll explain to you why I might not be giving some numbers because we're still in negotiation with the, with the, with the vendors. And if I give out a number now, it might hurt our negotiation.
Perfect, that's a fair answer. So I, I think that's why I'm saying if you can give us kind of a grand total. If, if you're, if that gives you the flexibility to kind of give us a grand, so I see what you're doing with some of these, makes perfect sense, but. If you just gave us a broad, you know, hey, we think we're gonna potentially recover this much in, in net savings. At some extent, that would be helpful.
Yep. So the other document, and I'll, I'll do this right after John speaks. One of the other documents I sent you. Um there's a buzz around both communities around circuit breaker. And circuit breaker money is money that we get for special education. And uh folks have said that we have millions and millions of dollars that recover in special education every year. And I had John keep, uh do up this document for you to better understand what we get in circuit breaker and what circuit breaker is. So John, if you could explain that document.
I think everybody got a, got a document that reads Whitman Hanson Regional School District Circuit Breaker Balance. I think the committee knows circuit breaker is a program that, that helps to phrase some of the costs related to providing services that are. That are part of the student's IEP. Uh whether they're residential or, or, or in a day program that exceed four times. Four times the, the foundation budget, which is about forty five thousand dollars. Circuit breaker has been over the last decade. Range from reimbursement rates from a low of about twenty eight percent in the early years to what is this? The maximum, which is seventy five percent these last few years. What it'll be next year at, at this point, and nobody knows. Um the way the district handled circuit breaker, as near as I can tell, was, was what most people do. And that is the money that they collect. In, in a year, it goes to fund the next year's um special ed costs. Usually it's. It is um transportation and tuition just because it's, it's easy to justify and easy to keep track of. And so you start off saying, I'm going to collect and in, in our case for fiscal twenty, we know that our claim is one million, one hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. That's what we're gonna claim. This year, that's what we're gonna get. And in a perfect world, that's what we would have on hand to be put into the next year's budget. But those carryovers are often used to take care of unexpected and unbudgeted expenses that happen. And I believe the district went through a lot of that in fiscal nineteen, the year that ended last June thirtieth. And in fact, at the end of the year, there was six hundred and ninety two dollars left to be carried forward. It really wasn't very much at all. So this year's budget assumed that we would use four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So looking at the numbers. You can see the carry forward was six hundred and ninety two, two dollars. Uh we anticipate and fully expect to get the million, one hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Which means the total available circuit breaker funds for. For, for this year is a million, one hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. We spend the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we expected to spend. Um this year, and that gives us a year end balance of seven hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. It assumes there's no budget deficits, no big surprises, no. No move-ins. That's what we start next year with. Um as we go into next year. We assumed, we don't know what we're gonna get in circuit breaker. It's not gonna be zero, but it may not be a million dollars. We're not sure what it's gonna be. And we do know that we're going to use at this point, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what's in the budget. To offset costs next year. So we would have seven hundred and twenty two thousand dollars in that account, far from a million dollars. Um and whatever we get, and we haven't filed the claim yet, but once we find out, once we file the claim and the state plants a flag as to what the percentage reimbursement will be. That's what will be available, we hope for fiscal year twenty two.
Everybody understand that? Questions?
Uh Chair.
Fred, go ahead.
Uh and just to clarify, and I'm trying to rack my brain, the, prior to this year. The way they would do circuit breaker would be uh foundation budget average. Times four uh throughout the entire Commonwealth.
Correct. That's, that's been the fund for, for quite, quite a number of years.
And the Student Opportunity Act revised that a little bit. Didn't they set it a little bit higher for the foundation budget?
The, the, the foundation budget has increased every year. Um and so as the foundation budget increases. The threshold for when we can collect sort of.
Goes up.
Goes up.
Right.
One of the things that was intended to happen in fiscal year twenty one. Was for us to be able to include transportation. And they were gonna use.
Correct.
An approach over a number of years. And that, that famous phrase that, that always comes back to bite is subject to legislative.
To appropriation.
Um there is, there's a lot of concern that there really isn't gonna be a lot of leftover money, if you will. Um or fund transportation expenses next year if the state is gonna keep. Their reimbursement rate at seventy five percent. Now for us and for frankly, all districts. It would be, excuse me, it would be great if we could start to include transportation. Because while we often think about the very expensive. Out of district placements that are residential or dealing with medically fragile students that run several hundred thousand dollars. An awful lot of our placements are, are day placements for a school like Pagashi or. For the May Institute or, or Cardinal Cushing. Where it's a day program, the tuition is sixty thousand dollars. The transportation is thirty thousand dollars. That's a ninety thousand dollar placement to the district, but the first, but we don't get anything for transportation. And the first forty five thousand dollars of that sixty, which is tuition and reimbursable. Is up to the district. So really we're getting reimbursed on fifteen thousand dollars and. It takes a lot of those to, to make up those costs.
And, and perhaps I said it wrong. I'm racking my brain. I thought they took the foundation budget and actually lowered the uh foundation budget amount. So in other words, bringing reimbursement higher. And then again, you know, as you said, everything is subject to appropriation. And I think we would be uh considered to be very lucky and fortunate if we just get level funded for next year. Never mind any reduction.
Well, I, I agree. I think the issue with, with, if the state is level funded. Um is we know that, that special ed costs are going up um across the board for all, for all approved programs and all these programs that are. That our students participate in are, are, the prices are set by OSD. We're not negotiating, the state's negotiating them. They go up every year and so you've got a. Same group of, of schools competing for a pot of money that um as costs go up, our percentage share goes down. Um so unless they increase that pot of money, the state, um we will just net. Just by necessity see less money. Now, when the budget comes out, we'll have a sense of, of what that reimbursement will be for next year. And um you know, hopefully we're gonna have some, some surplus in that account. In case we run into an, another year like nineteen where we get. Move-ins that were unexpected or, or students that we thought were properly placed, but something happens and now they move on to a more expensive placement.
Thank you.
Chair. Mr. Boyce.
Yeah, so I know you all know I represent us for um Plymouth Area um Collaborative. We had a Zoom meeting um. Last Thursday. And before that, I'm on the um Budget Subcommittee. And by the way, John, thanks for all that information. We're, we're going, we're hoping for the June meeting. I'm, I'm meeting one more time with the people that are involved in the Budget Sub. Meeting, but it looks like. Between a. Business manager, treasurer and executive director, we're able to come out hopefully level funded. We didn't raise any of our rates. We've been at like fifty two thousand the last two or three years. We're one of the lowest. Now it, for us, I think Whitman Hanson spent two hundred thousand. Year, last year, the year before, whatever. And remember, we got back a small amount. The thing that makes me nervous is, one. The affordability of districts going forward. For the special ed, but also. We may have a lot more in moment in these programs because. Um some of these students might come out of this COVID thing and it's, it's not gonna be a good thing for them. You know, that, that might be something. That we find that there's, there's a rise of need for them to have special services. So I'm not trying to speak and, and. Put any doom on anything, but just kind of given a sense of what, what we've seen. Um and what we're planning for. I think it's just kind of good to know. Thank you.
Chris Howard?
Just a quick question. So to the extent there is a year end balance, where does it go? Does it reside in its own fund, or is it just carry forward into E and D? What what where does the where does that, if there is a balance, where does it live?
It lives in it lives in the circuit breaker fund. It's a separate, it's a separate fund in our in our chart of accounts. And what it can be spent on is is restricted to certain special education expenses by by the state.
Robbie?
Um, for either Jeff or John, and we can even speak offline on it, just going back to the the full day kind of got in pre-K. Is that something through either the Plymouth County Grant or through MEMA FEMA that we're able to reimburse on because it's lost revenues?
I don't, if if I could.
Go ahead, John.
I do not believe that FEMA is going to allow allow us to collect on that. I mean, I started to look at the FEMA paperwork, listen to the briefing that they had. It was a week ago last Friday. And they were pretty clear about what was covered, and it was it was items related to emergency providing services during during an emergency and ongoing COVID issue. And I don't, I don't think they're gonna take lost revenue, opportunity costs as an expense. Now, the the money that Plymouth County has gotten is sort of interesting. I haven't seen any details about what it will cover.
Yeah, that hasn't that hasn't come out yet, and that's what we're waiting for on the municipal side of things too, to see what that's gonna cover.
I think we're all looking at that and saying, so so what are the rules with that? So far, the rules that I've seen for for any of the CARES money, the FEMA money, so far, it doesn't cover lost tuition, but there may be other grants coming.
Okay. Thank you.
George?
So if we're just talking, Robbie, if we're just talking about money that's coming in. So we know that there's the CARES Act, and that's the federal aspect of money that comes in. So Mass D E S I calls their portion the E S S E R, which is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Fund. We did a webinar today. We discussed that. And in there, there are many different things. What Steve Boyce just said about mental health opportunities for students who are gonna need it. They talk about any item that's related to COVID nineteen. They talk about any item for shutting down your school, engaging student learning, measuring gaps in student learning, reopening ed technology, but they do not, but there's specific things that it doesn't do. And some of the things that it doesn't do is salaries for people who might not be, who might not have, who are getting paid out of L E A and not that.
Okay.
Really, the money that we're gonna get from the CARES Act or the Massachusetts aspect of an E S R is really runs along the line of Title I. The the application looks a lot the same, the ramifications are the same. So we're gonna, we're gonna go for that money. It's due June fifteenth, and that'll go from March first till the following July, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty one. It is based on, I know that there was a question for this meeting. It is based on the Title I allocation. So our allocation for that is two hundred and ninety two thousand, two hundred and seventy three dollars. And that's what we are eligible for in this. And but we sort of have to play by the same rules of the federal government as we do for Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. But that meeting was today. That webinar was today, so we'll be moving forward with that.
Okay. And George, I got other questions, but I'll give you a call tomorrow. So I'll jam us up with FEMA questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
John?
Thanks for answering that, George, on the Title I. Question, the pre-K fund balance, I don't know, John Tuffy or Jeff, if you can answer. It begins with a negative of ninety seven thousand. Was that starting off for FY twenty? That account had a negative?
So I don't know if we're started off. But as I said before, the we base, we have to run a an integrated preschool program. And district, as I'm learning this, because that was a surprise to me as well. The district hasn't really fully funded that program. And it's always running in the negative. So I'm looking at for next year to make sure it's either appropriated through the special, at least special education. So it's not a full tuition-based program, that it's not gonna run in the deficit, and we have this problem again this year. So when I, when we, when we stop these tuitions and Mary Jo, our accountant, sent me this, I kind of lost it a little and said, why are we in the negative here? We shouldn't be. And lo and behold, I was told in the past, we've always run in the negative, and it was always taken care of. So I'll be more open with the committee to make sure that you have an idea of where we're at in this, and that won't run in the deficit again. But the fact is, we don't have as many children coming in that are regular education that can fully fund the need for that special education piece of it. And George Lauren Matheson and I actually had the conversation to say, shouldn't this be a fully funded special education program? Supplemented with tuitions instead of a tuition-based program that is then supplemented by the district. So that's what we're going to going to address moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for George on the CARES Act piece? At all, it's just something that I know people have talked about. It's two hundred and ninety something thousand dollars. It's really looking at this year's expenses and preparation for next year. And some of the preparation of if we end up going virtual again at any given point. And and then the logistics of what we're gonna have to put in for preparation or for P P E for people, for sanitation stations, whatever. It's pretty broad in what we can spend money for, but this isn't revenue for us. We have to expend this, and it's federally based. So we need to make sure we got our eyes and crossed our knees when we when we submit our paperwork for them. Chris Howard, I I kind of ran some numbers, so really rough, rough estimates. And I just didn't do the math. I'm gonna give you big numbers here. I'm looking at potentially a fifty to sixty thousand dollar savings from Fox between a hundred and twenty five and three hundred thousand dollars from First Student. Now, we have to be careful. Any type of transportation that is is gonna be subject to lack of reimbursement next year from the state. So if if we don't spend it, we're not getting it back next year as far as First Student. I'm looking at S J between a hundred and a quarter to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Athletics, I showed you already, sixty five to seventy. North River Collaborative is about sixty. I think those are the numbers that I have there, and then we're at a third, three twenty two, three hundred and twenty two thousand dollar deficit in full day and pre-K. So those are rough numbers. I'm hoping John Tuffy can work some miracles with Fox and First Student. And we come up on the higher end of that. And that money that anything we have as far as revenues would roll over into E and D could potentially be used by this committee for FY twenty one if need be. I'm hoping to have harder numbers next week. I didn't, there was that meeting on negotiation on this coming Monday. But those are our fluid meetings, and I think we will be in a better spot because the legislature has given us some direction. Desi's given us some direction, and we should have better numbers. And since we usually meet every Wednesday, I figured we'd be meeting again next Wednesday, so I would share those information, that information to you.
Fred?
Uh, John Tuffy, when we see certified, I believe we can
Every other, we can't understand you coming in every other word.
Uh, describe this now, perhaps a little better, hopefully.
That's not good. It's just as bad. Can you send?
I think your question was, what, when do we certify E and D?
When does, when does E get certified? We can utilize
Can't hear it.
Yeah. How loud the computer are you?
Hold that thought, and I've got a question. Can you still hear me?
Uh, fine.
Uh, Jeff, while we're waiting on Fred, just a couple of things.
Yep.
As a school district, we have to notify the governing bodies if we plan on using the fields or the roads for parades or graduation ceremonies. And the governing bodies would be the Board of Health and the Board of Selectment because they have voted to close fields. And part of the front field, even though it's only parking, is in Whitman, so we'd have to notify both Whitman and Hanson about using any of the fields just to keep current with with water health and with the water selection. And I'm just re, I'm getting answers texted and emailed to me. Also, we talked about, John had talked about whether it was a majority or a two thirds. And I, the answer says from Frank that it is a simple majority at town meeting because the school is borrowing the money, not the town. So it's not a two thirds. So Frank Lytton says that that gives, and again, I'm receiving texts, guys. I'm not trying to jump back and forth. I'm just trying, as they're as they're coming in from the governing bodies, I'm just trying to keep everybody updated. Back to Fred. How you doing?
Uh, hopefully, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, John, when does E get certified? And we can do a line item transfer out of E and D at any time and readjust our budget. Is that correct?
E and D is certified in the fall after we close our books. Usually Department of Revenue get the information from schools. Excuse me, I wasn't here before, but usually we're in a position to send it in 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 sort of September, October range. And and Department of Revenue usually turns it around two or three later. So more or less, you see it somewhere between September and November.
Okay.
Fred, you good?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, so so Jeff, if I got the numbers right, I did fifty, one twenty, three hundred, one twenty five, sixty five, fifty.
Yeah, you shoot high, but yeah, yeah, that's good. Okay.
I took the bottom of every number you gave.
Well, I I said for First Student between a hundred and a quarter and three hundred, so.
Okay, okay, no, 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 fair. So thank you very much. That's, I, I love the audio with some of these calls. It's it's So, right, so if we say that's roughly five fifty and there's three thirty, then we know there's at least maybe a couple hundred in wiggle room that we should probably feel pretty comfis now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not the business guy. Your superintendent says, yeah, but the business guy is closing the book, so I I'm gonna defer to John.
We haven't gone through all the other accounts yet. I mean, we've started the process of closing out purchase orders because we know we're not buying anything else. Whether or not we're gonna come out, even on all of the utility accounts, all of the very, I know that we've got some deficits, not major deficits, but some deficits in some of the facilities accounts because of, some of it has to do with 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 unexpected expenses. Some of it has to do with with extra cleaning we've had to do. So we're trying to get a number around that. I don't expect to see any major, huge deficits, but it's, but there's still maybe some surprises in some of the other accounts.
Chris?
Yeah, completely understand. I think where I'm going is I'm anticipating the discussion tonight at some point, moving to kind of that budget discussion and just trying to have a sense of, to the extent the committee has the appetite to look at some of some of E and D. You know, what what is, understanding that we probably don't want to touch any, but understanding if there's some money that's gonna flow into the account. Is there something we can do to kind of help pull that budget together? So that's, that's why I'm asking. I know it's not, this is more, there's a lot more art than science. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Jeff, keep going.
So thanks, Bob. So so we've been working since since August of last year discussing at at length with attorneys, with members from DESI, between ourselves, with boards of select people, with FinCom people, some passionate pleas on what the school budget's gonna look like for FY twenty one. What do the numbers look like? What's the assessment gonna be? Back and forth, back and forth. We established a regional agreement amendment committee. And we've had kind of quite a few conversations. We met as a school committee two weeks ago, and and as of two weeks ago, we still didn't have a budget coming out of out of our district for our for our kids, for our teachers. I think George, John, myself, I think a lot of, put a lot of time into putting a a good budget together that will satisfy the needs of our students. I think we we fit to that, looking upon what what COVID nineteen might do for us and our class sizes for next year. And I thought, I felt the committee had some had some good feelings about the numbers that we presented. However, the committee has been challenged by what that means to our two communities. And I ask you to keep considering in mind that you're you're a school committee member for for us and for the kids and the teachers of our district. But I also know that you have your community's best interest as you sit and represent the people that put you in these chairs. So after our regional agreement committee meeting, when when Justin Evans spoke and Laura Kemet spoke on a compromise, and I've heard the word compromise, I've heard the weird deal, I've heard the word, let's let's make this happen. And they mentioned a fifty fifty split between the two communities, and I really didn't understand what that meant. And I speculated myself on what they might have been talking about between the between the select folks and between the town administrators. And I had a conversation with a couple of regional agreement committee members last week with Christine Lynch from DESI. How do we make this happen to get a budget out of school committee that's in the best interest of our kids? And using the the terminology that I heard, compromise, and what does that mean? Is is that doable? And I know Christine Lynch spoke to our school committee and said, you know, there are ways that you can move into using the statutory method, so it's not a one hit to one certain town. So that was the specific question that that was asked of Christine, is how how do we go about doing that? So walking through that process, she mentioned the fact that we could propose an amendment to our regional agreement that states what a fifty fifty compromise would be for FY twenty one. And if if the thought from the committee was statutory moving forward, because I know that's what I've heard from at least one community is that they'd like to see statutory moving forward, and that we were using this statutory method. I put together some numbers, and I asked John to put together some numbers, using a fifty fifty split. Meaning, we take the statutory number for both Whitman and Hanson and split it down the middle, fifty fifty. And then we take the agreement part, the sixty forty or the fifty nine point zero something number, forty percent number, and splitting that down the middle to showcase to the committee what that actually means as far as a fifty fifty split. And then I asked, and I I sent a note to Andy War, our attorney, to come up with some amendment language. So it's official that this is what it would look like if presented to this committee, and this amendment could be presented after, if this committee wants me to push it forward, I would present it to the government at DESI for approval of our amendment, of our firm, of our voted on regional agreement that we have right now as an amendment. Not as a reopening of the regional agreement. That's gonna be the charge of the Regional Agreement Committee, but this is an amendment to that. The process out of school committee would be then to make sure that this amendment is potentially on the on the warrant as a as a line item, and it's secured in both with both communities right now. And that would have to be voted on by the residents of the town. If the residents of the town affirmed this amendment, then they could vote the school budget. So what I have before you is the agreement or the amendment to the agreement. And I also gave you the numbers of what it would look like as far as an assessment using the statutory method and the agreement method, fifty fifty, with the four teachers and without the four teachers. What I would ask this committee to do is really look hard at that. Not make any reductions to this budget that we've proposed. Send it out to the FinComs and the Boards of Selectment, like we've always affirmed a budget, send it back. And they would then pick it back to us to say, this is what we can afford. This is what we were thinking. But folks, I I'm really asking, almost begging you to get a budget out of committee. I have to issue pink slips to teachers by May thirty first. Silver Lake mentioned in their in their school committee, they're already losing people for next year. I have some very anxious folks in our district teaching from home right now, knowing that the school committee hasn't affirmed a budget out of committee yet. There's the other document that you have there is is the same budget as we've seen since, I believe, February fifth. What it means for an assessment, it's the straight out statutory method that the committee show you, and we have the modified statutory method. So that's what I'm asking from this committee to look at the amendment that I put together and the budget numbers that I put together. It's just the fact that I think we are committed to to trying to get a budget out of committee, and I I felt like we were kind of stagnated. Christine Lynch offered some good guidance to us on on what we could do to do that legally and moving it forward. that legally and moving it forward. Um, what I want to try to do is avoid a one-twelfth budget, uh, and, and again, Christine, and, and I did send you some, some documentation from DESI today that I haven't been able to read through fully, came out about four-thirty this afternoon. And it was, it also, it, for school committees to get budgets out of school committee, so at least the towns had an opportunity to vote on that. But it also did talk about the language of a one-twelfth budget, what that meant. So I just throw that out there. It's information for you to have, um, and then we can, we can move from there.
Discussion. Unmute yourself.
All day trick. So, you know, I think, um, a couple things. So I think to kind of talk about what Jeff started with, it's certainly been a contentious and difficult debate. Um, and I think as we've all talked about, our job is not just to set that budget, but rather to make sure that we're doing what we, the best we can for the students of the district, as well as Jeff said, the townspeople that elected us. So I think that, that compromise document or agreement methodology that's presented as an amendment, uh, when I look at it, I'm sure there's people in Whitman that will likely feel that we should have been using the newer statutory method for years. And I'm sure there's people in Hanson that will likely feel we should continue to keep, keep using the older agreement method. But that doesn't move us forward. So I like that this is simply a half and a half blend between both of those methodologies for, for next year. Um, I think most importantly, it gives an opportunity for the townspeople of Whitman and Hanson to have a say in how we move forward or, or don't move forward. And I think that's ultimately what I've been looking for is making sure that we put something to the towns that isn't simply decided by ten people on various select boards or ten people in a school committee. This, this is something we can put forward to the townspeople and, and hopefully, um, allow us an opportunity to move forward. Um, so that's on the, on the, um, on the amended, on the amendment. And then on the budget, I think the one thing that I'd be looking for, um, is I, I do think, you know, supportive of the four teacher positions, but I do, uh, we should really be looking at E and D, I mean, we are going to have some cost savings and, and potentially bring those numbers down a little bit, um, from where they are. So those are my overall thoughts.
Any else, Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, um, and thank you for that.
Yeah, okay, Fred, you're next.
You know, uh, probably the one with the biggest target on my back because some people are going all the way back to two thousand six, two thousand seven, and I was a FinCom chair. I can't, I can't not undo that and, and I won't. Um, I think this is very fair. I, if, if this is something that Mr. Scribber will tell me, you know, the R A A C would approve and so forth, um, and if people want to make those calls to me tomorrow, hey, I'm busy. I, I've got a lot of work to do, uh, with my regular job and I'm not putting it off. I'm going to be right up front. There's anyone that has a problem with me going back to two thousand seven, I think you need to just move on. And I'm not talking on this committee necessarily, but I, 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 I can feel things, you know? Um, and I have never done anything to hurt anyone. So I, I would just appreciate, first of all, that. But I'd like to hear from Mr. Scribber just on what the R A C C, R A A C has been and, and what they, may, maybe what their thought pattern would be, because I think this is an excellent idea.
Wait a second, Mr. Boyce, Mr. Small was next, but if, um, Mr. Scribber, if Mr. Small would let that a question be answered and then I can go to Fred, is that all right with you, Fred? Thank you. You're muted, Fred.
That would be fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, Steve, um, we haven't, um, met in, I would say, a couple of weeks now. Um, and, you know, uh, I was on that call with Christine Lynch, um, that Jeff referred to as the, uh, chairman of that committee. And, you know, we did make sure to ask her, um, you know, were we within, you know, our, um, uh, you know, legal problems, um, and whatnot, moving forward out of the school committee, um, with, with something. And, uh, she assured us that, that, uh, we could do that. Um, so this issue really pertains to this year's budget. And that's, um, what, uh, Bob had, uh, you know, reminded us one of our first meeting. Um, you know, this year's budget i- is something that the school committee needs to deal with. The regional agreement committee will, will, um, um, you know, will meet again and, and hopefully sometime soon and work through all the other, um, areas of the agreement that need to be brought into compliance. So this is an amendment to a ninety-one existing agreement, um, that's putting, that's put forth today.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just want to see if things were parallel and, and, and that's good, Chris. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Chris. Fred, thank you. Thanks, Fred, for being patient.
No, no problem. No problem. Uh, so who, and I have a couple of questions. Who was on that phone call with DESI, with Christine Lynch?
You're asking me, Fred?
Jeff, Christine, oh, Chris, rather.
Um, as I remember it, um, Jeff Simonak, George Pharo, Bob Hayes.
I wasn't on.
Bob was not on the phone call. Uh, the Hanson representative was Chris, Chris Howard and myself. I, I believe that's it.
And John Stanbrook was on the call.
Oh, correct. Thank you.
Fred, you still there?
Yeah, I'm here. Was anyone else from Whitman invited on that phone call?
This is pertaining to.
I don't know who was invited or not, Fred. It, we, it was something I asked, um, as the chairman of the RAC to reach out to Christine Lynch so that we knew we were, um, proceeding the way we should be.
Okay. And Jeff, you had stated that you put together the amendment?
I asked Andy to draft language, Andy Waar, our attorney.
Who else drafted language in there?
Who else drafted language?
Yes.
I, I, I spoke to him and this is the language he put together. I didn't write this down. This is what he sent me today, based upon the conversation I had with him yesterday and based upon the conversation I had with Christine Lynch, and I shared that information with him. I said it would be a fifty-fifty split. He asked for the ninety-one regional agreement and he took that and amended that and put this amendment together based on the ninety-one agreement.
Great. Mr. Howard, done editing in there?
Can't hear you, Fred.
Mr. Howard, you, you had done some editing into that print?
So I was on the call with Attorney Waar, and I think the question really was out of how is that fifty-fifty determination language, uh, being developed? So, uh, I would see from participating meetings, it's the same language, uh, was presented, uh, in a couple of those meetings, both initially in the first one and again, I think consented proposed by Laura. So there was some question of what that language, as Jeff alluded to, he was trying to kind of get a sense of what that language was, so we just referred him back to what was discussed in the RAC.
Right. Now, just seeing in the document, it shows.
Fred, you're coming and going real bad again.
Okay. And I got a computer right though, so, uh, hanging up, so hopefully this is going to clear up in a moment or two. Uh, lovely con gas that we have as far as that goes. Um, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll forego the rest of my time and hopefully this cleared up very shortly.
Okay. Anyone else? Dawn, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
Thanks, Chair Hayes. Um, I know you opened it up to discussion, but I'm not sure if we, I know we don't have a motion in front of us and superintendent presented the information giving a series of events I feel like that we're discussing right now. So, uh, perhaps I'm looking for clarification. There's conversation around this amendment, three pages that was sent out. I received it at six-thirty tonight, so I am, um, a little short on time in being able to review this with what other agreements we have in, in the twenty-eighteen amendment and also the numbers for the fifty-fifty split. Um, I've looked at them and off the top I see the impact changes the assessment from one town to another and it increases Whitman's assessment by five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I know that Whitman Finance Committee has a placeholder in their Article Two, um, line item for fifteen million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. So if I'm looking at this right, it would increase it by five hundred and seventy thousand. Um, given the conversation that happened earlier tonight about, um, revenue shortages, um, with the towns, um, I don't see, um, where Whitman would be able to come up with an additional five hundred and seventy thousand where we can't fund a feasibility study and we have to borrow for it. So if I could just, um, ask where we're, where we're going with this series of events and then, did you also say Chair Hayes that we're looking to rescind, um, the statutory method? Was that mentioned earlier tonight?
This is a discussion that we're kind to have kind of openly. The, the series of events would be you would have to vote the amendment, then vote the budget with or without the four teachers and then rescind the vote on the statutory method. But I think at this particular time where it came so late, because I just also received some information that Christine Lynch said a standalone amendment to the ninety-one agreement might not, could not be made because there are several other parts of that agreement that are out of compliance. I think that this probably should be, maybe something that we let DESI review to see if it holds water and then send it to the two towns to see if they're on board and maybe hold the budget and the rest of this for another week. Cause it did come at a, at a last minute time and it seems like there's going to be further discussion with the towns. But it was something that Jeff did trying to get the towns together, which I think was a noble act. Everybody's trying to make this, this plausible we can for the, or as pleasant as we can for the next year or so. So it might be worth scheduling another meeting next week from what I'm hearing, but keep, as a committee, what are you thinking?
Chair Hayes.
I'm sorry, was that Fred? Chris had his hand up then, Fred. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, I think if folks haven't had an opportunity to review the information, it would only be fair to do so. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we need a week to review it, though.
Fred, go ahead.
Uh, same thing as Jeff.
Go ahead, Fred.
As Jeff had, uh, you know, stated, you know, with Michelle Griffin's email on the one-twelfth budget, he hadn't had a chance to review that, that came in at four-thirty. Uh, this came in around six-thirty tonight and then later, uh, even for this, uh, amendment. I haven't had a chance to really absorb the language or the numbers. Uh, however, I think it could be perhaps a consensus of this committee to relay this information in the both, both towns and understand if we're, you know, spinning our wheels or not, because it's going to be dependent upon support from the towns, from the selectmen and FinComs anyways. And we saw what happened last time. Uh, you know, make sure everyone's quote unquote on board, so to speak. I'd love to vote a budget and I believe a budget, uh, echoing Chris with four teachers is the appropriate thing to do. Uh, God knows if we end up there at the end of everything, uh, with everything that's going on with, uh, revenues, but I think that's the place to start to try. As far as how the pie gets broken up from there, I'd just like to know if those folks are going to be on board, because the only way things get through is going to be with their support. And I, you know, uh, do, uh, want to hear what they say as well.
Anyone else? Well, I, I think personally, there's no question that we need both finance committees on board. There's no question we need both boards of selectmen on board because ultimately has before the town. I think that, again, if we wait another week, and I'm not trying to push this off, don't get me wrong, because I agree with you a little bit, Chris, it, maybe we should have another meeting in a few days, but I think, one second, Mike, I think that waiting and letting them absorb it and let them have time to talk to their committees might be prudent because they play a huge part in all of this and this has been going on for months trying to get some sort of a resolution. And this doesn't sound like the worst thing in the world. I don't see a lot of, a lot of discussion. So Mike Jones is next and then, uh, Robbie. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, yes, I asked this question a couple of months ago. Um, can we vote the budget tonight and not the assessment? I never got any answer, but why can't we vote the budget with the four teachers tonight? I think everyone agrees with it. And then why can't we hold off on the voting, the actual assessment? I think it has to be a separate vote anyways, correct?
I would say you could vote the budget at any time and the budget, the budget can be, um, amended all the way to town meeting floor. Somebody can get up at town meeting and change the number.
But isn't the assessment a separate, is what I'm asking. Don't we have to vote the assessment to each town?
Yes.
We have, is, so. So if we vote the budget tonight, what is the downside? To give the towns what they want? The, the selectmen all say they need a number and the finance needs a number. What is the downside?
Chris, you want to answer that, Chris Howard?
Like, they're not getting a number, we don't give them the assessment methodology. Dawn's point, you already have placeholders being made by FinComs. So we need, we need to have the assessment methodology tied to the budget, otherwise what number are we giving them, right? We're giving them a budget and what is it based on? Is it based on fifty-fifty? Is it based upon the old methodology? Is it based upon the new methodology? Those, that would be three totally different numbers. I think to Fred's earlier point, um, to be clear and what I, what I was saying, uh, I would be in favor of a budget with the four teachers in it, but I'm not in my position that I think it's our job to make sure that there's a compromise put forth to the townspeople. But I think that's order to get to a budget. So me, look, I'm all for, Bobby, if folks, if folks have not had the time to read this, I think, fine, but I also think, uh, selectmen are probably meeting, I think selectmen are meeting next week. I think we need to keep this moving. I think we need to give them numbers. So I don't think we should be waiting a week. Maybe it's Friday, Friday night party.
Friday night. Friday in the back of the high school.
Remember Monday, Monday, they gotta, selectmen have to set their agendas. If they're meeting on Tuesday, give them time.
Okay. Robbie, you were next, then Mr. Boyce.
Robbie? Hey, thank you to everybody that worked on this, um, because this is what I've been talking about for six months or however long it's been now, that I think there needs to be some kind of compromise, because I got to be honest, I think without the compromise, we go, we end up in a one-twelfth budget. Um, and, and I, I agree, it just came out tonight, so, you know, to, to be fair to everybody on the committee and to the FinComs and to the selectmen, you know, let, let discussions go on for the next, uh, couple of days or a week or whatever it takes so that they can, uh, so that they can digest it. Um, because in my opinion, there has to be a compromise, otherwise we're in a one-twelfth budget. So, and hopefully I'm wrong with that, but the way that it's sitting and the way that it's gone on for the last six months, whatever, it's been a ground hard day at these meetings and everybody knows that. So kudos to everybody that worked on this and let's push it out to the town administrators and everybody and, and get, get them discussing it, so.
Mr. Boyce?
I, I know it could be short on time, um, but traditionally or normally, this weekend would have been our town elections and we would have reorganized, uh, next Monday. So that might be a good way to kind of use that time, was all on our calendars probably or just, you know, theoretically on our calendars. Um, so like a Monday or Tuesday meeting, or if we do have to go until Tuesday, you know, at least give a little bit of time for, um, the FinComs, even if they haven't met or the Board of Selectmen, even if they haven't met, or maybe we invite them to our meeting. I don't know how much more capacity we have.
Okay. Dawn?
Um, forgive me, I think I've lost track. So if we are needing a few more days to digest this, I thought you just said, Chair Hayes, that Christine Lynch said an amendment is not legal. We need to have a completely revised regional agreement, fully intact. So while I haven't had time to digest this amendment, it's my understanding, we just stated that this, we can't even review this and use this amendment. So what is it we would be asking for, um, to look up?
We would be presenting the document to her and the attorneys and see if there's a possibility that this document might float. Cause I've, I've heard from DESI, we've seen Christine Lynch tell us a bunch of different things and we've also had, uh, people from Mass Association, regional school committees tell us a bunch of different things. And we've also had people from Mass Association, Regional School Committees tell us a bunch of different things. If we run it to them via email and say, how does this look? They might say it's out and we're done. They may also say it does compromise Chris and Jeff.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
That's fine. Yes, thank you.
Chris.
Chair.
Well, I just want to say I agree with Chris Howard. Um, we, we should, uh, meet again as possible and Friday works for me. Um, you know, with the thought in mind that, um, you know, the selectmen's, uh, meetings next week be posted. So waiting beyond Friday, I think, um.
Can't meet on Friday. You need forty-eight hours notice, two business days. It'd be Friday at eight forty P M. night.
Yeah, it'd have to be Monday.
Friday at eight forty P M.?
Yes, you have to give.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yo, where are we going? I just, I got another little clarification and this, the texting part is fabulous. I'm sorry that people can't be there to talk about it. Christine Lynch said if we're going to do a standalone amendment, it should be done on the two thousand and eighteen version because that was brought into compliance. So that's saying, we might be able to tie all of this together and come up with some sort of agreement. Because I'll tell you right now, the boards of selectmen and the boards and the finance committees have worked very, very hard with everybody on this committee trying to get this done. So I think a few more days and let everybody look at it. If we come up with an agreement and get a budget, it's what we need for the children of Whitman Hansen. And I don't remember who was next. Jeff, I think.
I'll defer to Fred. I'll defer to Fred and then I'll, I'll speak.
And what I was going to say is, uh, you know, for, uh, Chris Griffin, if you could get your committee together in light speed, uh, to be able to vote on the old, the revised regional agreement that was rescinded by Hanson with this new language inserted, provided it's the feeling, you know, et cetera. Because if we can throw that one document into Desi and we'll get everything done all at once, we're golden. Uh, and it was my understanding that she said, because the ninety-one agreement was in compliance under the apportionment of costs, that you couldn't just amend that portion and you had other areas that needed to be taken care of at the same time. So I don't know if your committee wants to meet at eight forty Friday night.
No, I, at this point, I think we should, um, it would be my recommendation to reach out to Christine Lynch directly and our lawyers and figure out how best to proceed.
Everybody, um, consensually agree with that. I, I, and we'll set a school committee meeting for Friday, for Monday evening, whether we have to cancel it or not, and that'll give us the forty-eight hours. Jeff, go ahead. I'm sorry I jumped in front of you.
That, that's, that's okay. So a couple of things. I'll reach out to Christine no matter what. You know, I, I think she, I have her cell phone number. She knows us well. So I, I think I can get her, her attention because she wants, she wants to help us. That was the one lasting piece is she said, I want to help you guys through this process. So the, the point of clarification, and George, Michelle and I are going back and forth a little bit too, on what we heard, is whether we can do an amendment to the agreed-upon agreement that we have, which is ninety-one, or the agreement that was, that was put forth and approved by Desi, uh, that wasn't passed in both of our town. So it's either the twenty, or nineteen ninety-one agreement that we can amend or the two thousand and eighteen agreement that we can amend. But, but she did say, and this is what I want the committee to hear, is she did say, this is the process that we can use to make sure we can get a budget, uh, instead of going through the entire agreement if there are portions that don't necessarily have to pass at town meeting. This amendment to the agreement, no matter which agreement we're amending, has to be approved at town meeting before the town can get our budget. If that makes sense. If we're using any modifications, this modified statutory method, her recommendation is that the town has the agreement first, votes that forward and then votes the budget. If either town does not vote the amendment to the agreement, we're going to one-twelfth because we won't have a budget. So I just want the committee to hear that. The other piece is just really, I wanted to put this together so that you had something. All I've heard from, from both communities is give us numbers. We've had the same numbers since February. We added the four teachers, so we amended those numbers. The only numbers that have changed is the assessment and I really want you to digest that. But I would also ask before next meeting, is we don't make any reductions to our budget? I don't know what either town's fincom have, have worked with, but that's usually the next piece. Once we give them the budget, then they'll tell me what I need to cut or what you folks need to cut out of the budget and George and I can, can make some things happen. But we've given you a, a budget that we thought is level service. Anything below that, uh, then we added the teachers, I'm sorry. And I think that was something that was really needed anyway, but we just didn't put in level service. We gave you a level service budget. So I really asked the committee not to start cutting and, and different folks have talked about where can we move things around? Let's go into it. Let's let the fincoms and the selectmen tell me where their revenues are at. I know they're short, I think. I haven't heard from Frank or from John where their revenues are at yet. I think that's the next piece, but I really want you to be able to absorb this. This is, I'm trying to move us away from the, the banter back and forth. I've heard, I've heard from selectmen in both communities that a fifty-fifty, that number didn't come out of thin air for me. It was said in, in a, in a, in a formal meeting. Um, whether or not they agree to that now, I don't know. But at least I wanted the committee to have some direction on what that fifty-fifty actually looked like because we didn't have numbers up until, uh, until John ran those numbers this afternoon. And I apologize for the delay in this, but, uh, this came about from Christine's meeting, um, and then from our meeting with, with Andy yesterday. Uh, Andy was also going to be in touch with Christine Lynch to, to talk about, uh, where that was at. And, and we always have to, to know that Christine is retired and she only works a couple of days a week. Just like John, John only works a couple of days a week, but he seems to be here all the time. Um, so I, I, I really, I, I know you really need to, uh, to absorb that and I apologize for, for that piece. But I, I'm emphatic about, please don't try to reduce the budget until we can hear from, from both fincoms either formally or informally and I can present that information. Thank you.
Does that sound like a plan? Did I miss anyone? I'm sorry if I did. Dan, I'm sorry, Dan. Go ahead.
Yeah, hello, you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, um, I agree with, um, what Chris was saying and this looks like a good idea and like what Fred was saying, I think if we took the twenty-eighteen one that Hanson had passed and rescinded and stick this portion into it, because you can't go back to the, the original agreement, that's, doesn't look like it would fit legally. But if we take that amendment, um, and put it into that agreement that did pass Hanson, then they rescind it because of, out of this. That's at least a stepping stone going in the right direction. At least, at least it will get going in the right direction, I hope. If, you know, we pass this on and also I think it's, you know, we got it so late and to pass this off to both fincoms and selectmen, that's a good idea. Get them caught up to speed and, um, but as it goes for a budget, I think we can to put a budget there. I mean, Jeff needs, we need to get this to fincoms so they get the, like he said, get it back to Jeff and say, Jeff, no way, whatever they're going to say. But we can't just keep passing this down. Jeff has obligations to the staff. Staff needs to know what's going to happen. You know, we can sit here, fight over a compromise and whatever. At least this is looking like, you know, maybe it's time we do something like this to get, get the ball rolling because we can never get it going when you go to these super committees for some reason. It is our charge to get the budget, whether the towns want to absorb that or not, that's up to the town meeting. Um, and Mike, I think, I think we can put the budget out there, but we just don't vote on a, um, certifying the assessment at this point. But we should be throwing out a bud so these fincoms can work and throwing both these numbers here, the, the one without the agreement amendment on it and the one with the agreement amended on it, give it to both of them so they know what they have coming to them. I agree with everybody here. I think we should be putting the four teachers back on there. It's, it's due to the kids at least, um, that, you know, that is our charge. We got it, we got, you know, with the crap that's coming down with this coronavirus and revenue shortfalls, we got to do our best to get these kids what they need. Um, it might not happen, but that's not by our choice. We can only say we need this if the towns say otherwise, that's on them. Um, but it is our charge to get this budget in. I do, I do agree, we got to do something with this amendment. I do, I do like what Fred was saying. That might be a better alternative to get it going. And, um, if we have to, um, I say we probably make a motion to put forth, I can't read it on my pad here, um, that one documentation that had both the existing budget with the four teachers on it and the amended compromised, whatever they want to call it, budget. Put those numbers to us, to us the fincoms, let them get going because it has same numbers no matter what you do, it's just how they're going to have to work on and get back to us how they, whether they have money or not. Um, that's basically what I want to say. This has gone on way too long. Um, people out there that keep saying, you know, this, that, or the other thing just happened in the past. Sorry, yeah, it did happen in the past. Nobody caught it two years ago. You can't blame people for that. You can't blame, you know, one town over another either for that. It was on, you know, we were given information and we went with. It was bad information, but it's, it's there. It was voted on. It was passed by towns. You know, enough of this going back, finger pointing and all this. Uh, we, we got to move forward or this, this, this school district, we don't want to go into the one-twelfth. I know some people saying that's okay. It's not okay. You never want the state to do anything with your budget. I mean, you know, let's be realistic. We don't want to, um, we don't want to lose control, the financial control of this committee by going to the one-twelfth and forking it over to the state. Nothing's ever come good out of the state. They've always promised some things, never see it. So if, if that's what everybody wants, I, I say we, tonight, at least we get the budget, vote on it. How to get forward. I mean, it's unfair to have the staff and Jeff waiting to the last minute. I mean, what is it, June, June first, uh, Jeff, that we have to submit something to the state?
Uh, well, yes, if we don't have a budget, I've got to submit something to the state. That's the other piece is I can't start drafting what I'm sending to the commissioner, uh, based upon, you know, uh, since we won't have a budget by June first, I have to submit something to him by June first, uh, about the, uh, the fact that we won't have a budget. And he's going to need a budget number from the committee to know what, what that means, what are, what, what we're looking for, for F Y twenty-one before he sets an F Y twenty budget if we end up going into a one-twelfth. The May thirty-first thing is pink slipping for teachers. If this committee comes out and, and doesn't set a budget or is a budget lower than, than what we proposed, uh, I'm going to be sending out pink slip.
I want to try to avoid that. Okay. Fred?
Uh, one thing I wanted is I don't believe we need to vote an assessment methodology, but in voting a budget, you are voting the statutory method. The only time you have to vote a methodology, if I'm not mistaken, is if you're doing something that's not statutory. Uh, and then the town would have to, you know, specifically vote on that. I don't know that, uh, the statutory requires any different, you know, so to speak. But, you know, there is, uh, you know, perhaps some light with this, you know, we have to see what the powers-to-be say. Uh, I don't believe that, you know, the agreement belongs in our committee. I think it's our job to pass a budget and I would make the motion, you know, to approve a budget of fifty-five million, three hundred twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, uh, for F Y twenty-one.
Mr. Boyce seconds.
Mr. Boyce seconded discussion. Robbie?
So question on voting. So we have to have two-thirds vote for the budget. What happens with the assessment? So the assessment's majority vote or two-third votes?
I, I believe it's a, it's a two-thirds vote as well because the assessment is the budget as well.
Two-thirds, I believe.
Wasn't the assessment majority?
Chair Hayes, did you call? Oh, thanks. I, prior to this, I wanted to comment back, um, on the E and D. So Mr. Howard did mention if we needed to and whatnot. So I'd like to make a request to, um, John Tuffy or Superintendent, if we have this future meeting, if so, um, can you comment on the E and D that we had available? Just so we know where that sits.
Six hundred and five thousand dollars is what we have available right now.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't hear either.
Right now in E and D, let me triple check. I believe it's six hundred and five thousand dollars.
Six oh five. I'm sorry, John, I just didn't hear you.
Six, six, let me, um, let me triple check here.
Don, did you have any further comment?
Um, yes, just to follow up on the motion, I would agree that this committee's charge is to set the budget and I would support the teachers and the students in, um, exactly what we need, no less than last year because we know that that budget is, um, not level service to the prior year. So this budget that we're setting still has a reduction of nineteen positions that we lost, um, for F Y twenty. Um, yes, we've, sorry, we've added back four teachers to help with class sizes. Um, but that, um, still leaves us deficient in other areas in our schools as we've gone on and discussed in previous meetings. Thank you.
Chris, uh, Chris, John, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I just want to, um, express some concern, um, about binding ourselves into something here. Um, there's been a lot of work that has, has been done, um, by both member towns officials, um, to get to the point where we are. And it's closer now than, than we've ever been, um, in terms of a compromise. You know, and I've always referred to our Whitman Hansen community as an extended community and, and I believe that. And, and I've always been in favor of a compromise. Um, and my thought is if we do vote a budget, um, and we, by doing so, we, um, say it should be statutory method, the, the nature of this compromise is such that it's an agreement method for this one year. So I would caution us against, um, doing anything that would prohibit, um, this, uh, you know, compromise, uh, coming to fruition.
Mr. Howard?
Not to, not to overly repeat it, but so I think there's a couple of things. So I think to clarify, it sounds like previous vote on the assessment methodology is probably null if we need to do two-thirds and have a majority. So if, if that's the case, then presently we do not set, we do not sit with an assessment methodology. And the second issue is, again, if we just vote a budget number and we don't, we don't provide the assessment methodology, we're not, we're not given, we're not giving the fincoms anything that they can use. So I agree with what Chris just forth as a, as a school.
Going like Fred took.
Uh, sorry. How about now?
That's better.
Better.
Not good.
Hopefully you got both of them.
Can I make a motion that we, uh, ask Zoom for a refund?
Fred, good luck with that.
But Bob, can I just jump in for just a quick sec?
Who, who was it?
That was Jeff.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Robbie, you're next.
If we, if we're going to meet on Friday or Monday
Monday.
And, and people aren't super sure, that's, to me, we've, we've gone a lot of months. If it's a matter of a couple more days, I just would love to get a budget by next Wednesday, um, so I can start planning what I'm sending to the commissioner. But if, if we're committed to really looking at these documents, I, it's not, and I, I, I love you, Mr. Cullody, I hear what you're saying, but it's not imperative, a couple of days I, I can live with right now. Uh, it's a couple of weeks that I can't. Um, so if it's a couple of days right now and I'd love to get a budget out, but if there's a lot of questions that I think I'd like to ask Dean Lynch, or the two-thirds versus a majority, I want to be crystal clear on what that means uh, and not misguide you. And I, I don't have my law degree yet, so I, I don't really want to misspeak. But, uh, I'm okay, uh, if, if you're voting on a budget for me, for my staff right now, I'm okay deferring till Monday, uh, because it is a couple of short days away. It's not two and a half. uh, because it is a couple of short days away. It's not two and a half weeks. It's not a month. So thank you.
Chair Haze?
Fred, is that you?
It's me. Uh, you know, and based upon that, and I was just trying to come up with a number, not a methodology, uh, knowing that we were meeting soon, but I'd be glad to rescind my motion, uh, to allow us to get those questions answered, et cetera. I was just simply looking to establish the number, not specifically the methodology.
I'll rescind my second.
Who was that? Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, I'm rescinding my second, Mr. Boyce.
Okay. So consensually, we're not voting on anything. We're gonna wait on Monday and schedule a, a meeting for Monday. But I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I can finish your thought. If I could, just to clarify the, the question. Just to quick clarify the, the question on E and D. Um, the 2020 E and D was certified for, for $605,342 for the districts. That's the E and D that is available at this point in time to be used, um, if you wanted to offset the, uh, 2021 budget. Now that's not a whole lot of E and D and, and in fact, it's sort of a drop in the bucket for, for $55 million budget. But nonetheless, that's, that is the available number.
John, I remember when it was a million four, a million five, and we used to hit it for $150,000. John, go ahead.
Right. I recall we left it last year at 436,000. So we only replenished by 200,000 after FY 19 ended. So I don't expect putting anything more than 200,000 in or zero after the end of FY 20 and all these changes. So it's good to know what the figure is. Thank you, John Tuffy.
Okay. So is everybody, uh, what did, is everybody good until Monday? And we'll let everybody digest this. Fred's rescinded and then Mr. Boyce's second's rescinded. We've had a lot of budget talk and we can move on to the last two items. Everybody good with that? Consensually?
Fred and Steve, because I have my hand up. Bob keeps passing all the, that's okay. Uh, so thank, thank you for ending it guys, because we're, we're almost there. This is the broadest light spin in a long.
And, and, and my spirit is to, you know,
Somebody's breaking up.
Something happened.
I can hear you, Fred.
Uh, my spirit is to see something good happen. That's the spirit. I was just trying to get, because I felt like we needed a number, not maybe a methodology, not maybe an assessment to the two towns, solid number. And I think we also signed this to the number it is. But, you know, hey, wait a few more days, get all the answers to the questions. I don't know if, uh, Jeff, you want to list out the question you're gonna have Christine, or you want email? Even if they were done, how do you want to do that? You know, such as illegal, what, you know, is, which agreement do we have to do? Uh, do you need the majority or two thirds to vote a methodology?
To vote on the assessment, Fred's a two thirds. It's under 70, chapter 71, 16B. And we're gonna take up a collection to fix your headset or your phone.
Talk to Comcast. I just spent a couple of thousand bucks on all new equipment. Talk to Comcast.
There's a way when you come in, you can have them call your phone. It's much easier.
Yeah.
You hear that, Fred?
This sucks.
No, I, yeah, I hear, I hear fine. It's just when I talk sometimes.
Okay.
Maybe my wife had something to do with that too, you know?
I'm not going there. It was just Mother's Day. All right. We need to vote on an update to a job description, the administrative assistant to the high school counseling office. I believe Jeff, if I'm incorrect, am I correct, incorrect, correct me, but isn't that Kathy Getchell's position?
That is cor, that is correct.
I want to commend her. She has put in many, 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 many unbelievable years for the students of Whitman Hansen. She's retiring. We're losing a gem and she is an unbelievable person on top of it. So Kathy, if y'all listen, and I want to thank you for all of your service. You've been a fabulous, fabulous employee to the district and to generations of students from Whitman Hansen. And I'm not saying you're old like me. I'm just saying generations of students.
And then tell her to kick Mark off the couch so she can relax.
Exactly. So if you look in your packet, we have, um, administrative assistant, kind of a job description change, Jeff, if you want to talk about it momentarily?
It, it's, it's not huge, but, uh, it incorporates a couple of things. Kathy was strictly the, the guidance secretary, um, because, uh, of, of what George talked about way back in early March before we went out about our, our, uh, student opportunities act, what we had to submit to them as far as, uh, some of the things we were modifying. We're actually merging our counseling office with our special education office so that this new person will have access or kind of be the gatekeeper for special education students, students that are seeing their adjustment counselors and traditional students that are, or students that are seeing their, their other counselors. Their, their, the old term is guidance counselors. We consider all counselors counselors now. Adjustment counselors are a little bit more, uh, of the social emotional aspect. But this new person will be doing that. That was not in Kathy's old job description because we didn't break down that wall. So we're just modifying the position a little bit. Uh, it's still, you know, working with Ruth Kerrigan, who's the director of counseling services and the building principal. So it's not a huge modification. It's just adding a couple of lines to that, um, to what this new person will be doing.
An entertaining motion approved is written.
A motion.
So moved.
Second amendment, Mrs. Taylor.
Michelle, did you get all that? I, Michelle, you got it? Any further discussion?
Gave you the thumbs up.
I'm sorry. Seeing no further discussion. Mr. Boyce? Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Collydy?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. Okay. Here's a real easy one. The committee has to vote to accept a $5,000 donation from Eastern Bank to cover food services unpaid balances. How about that, guys? A fabulous donation. Congratulations to Eastern Bank. An invitation, a motion to accept.
Thank you, Dan.
Saying my name, Mrs. Taylor.
Got it.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Dan Collydy, Mr. Small seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Bob, just a quick clarif, clarification. Is it Bank of Eastern or Northeastern Savings Bank? Do we know?
It says Eastern Bank, Michelle.
I think it's Northeastern, the former Mutual Federal.
Correct.
Yeah.
Northeastern Bank, the former Mutual Federal. There's one in Morgan Center and there's one at the corner of, uh, 14 and 18.
If they were kind enough to make the donation, I just wanted to make sure we, we acknowledge the right folks. So thank you. Thank you for them doing that.
I'm just reading from the agenda. I'm sorry. So, uh,
You get a bank name. I get all the bank names.
From Northeastern Bank. Everybody good with that?
Eastern Bank.
Uh, yeah. And one question. Uh, I believe those are the same folks that donated many books, uh, to the Congress as well.
Yeah.
I mean, what, just wonderful people, wonderful people.
Mr. Pharoah?
Uh, yeah, it is. It's the same person, same bank. They wanted to do something a little bit different and they wanted to help during this time. Um, help students and help our district with food services because we've been putting some, you know, food out there for people and they just wanted to show their, their kindness for us.
That's awesome.
Well, again, thank you, Northeastern Savings Bank for your generosity. It shows you what a unbelievable community member we have in that bank. So congratulations and thank you to them. Is there any further discussion before I move to the vote? Mr. Boyce? Mr. Boyce, are you still there?
I'm here. Yes.
Hey, hey, do I have, do I have to have a little talk with you about your, uh, cat?
Miss Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Collydy?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. An entertaining motion to adjourn.
Again.
I'm, John?
Can you confirm our next meeting time with Michelle?
Our next meeting time is going to be at six o'clock, Monday evening.
Okay.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Everybody okay with that?
Me. Thank you. Thank you.
Wouldn't want to be quarantined with any, anyone else but you 15. Then we
Oh, boy. Right. Motion to adjourn.
Entertaining, buddy.
Uh, Mr. Small made that motion.
I will second Mrs. Taylor.
Wait a minute.
Okay. Mr. Boyce?
Collydy made this.
Yeah, we, Mr. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Collydy?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Don't anybody feel bad for Jonesy? I think he's in Wolfboro. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes, but can we also, uh, prevent, uh, Mr. Boyce's cat from, uh, walking across the screen maybe next week?
No.
Well, that provides our entertainment.
Mrs. Taylor.
And another, we're all drinking.
And Mr. Hayes? Yeah. Thank you, everyone. See you Monday night. You look good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone.